"Kung ano ang mga picture habang wala pa" "Doon din sa side habang mararami" "Ay, sarili mo na" "Kitain batrana" "Uylen" "Pakuha naman ako doon" "Pakunin mo ako doon para makulot" "Diyan dito na" "Uylen" "Sabas, kamindan lewa" "Ano ano, overexposed na kami" "Dami magprayer ba" "Huh?" "Kan, mahina din kaming ayaw"
"The session is now called 'To Order' "Everyone is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem"[477.52][481.36]"Bayang Magiliw, peras ang silang anan Alang ng kuso sa titit moy buhay Lupang hinirang, buya ka lang magiliw Sa manlulupi kita pasisilil Sa lalat at bundok sa simoy at sa langit mong pagka May hilang ang tulad awit sa paglayang tinawagan Ang isap ng wata at moy kagumpay narating pinig Ang bitumin na paraw niya kailan, pangpali magidili Dupa ng maraw ng wad, aming pagsitka Uyay lamit sa titik ko Aming ligaya napak may mahapit Ang lama tay na tatusayaw" Please remain standing for a one-minute silent prayer Majority Leader
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abaya Abayon Abelianosa Abu Abueg Asharon Akop Acosta Acosta Alba Adiyong Advinkula Agarao Agabao Aglipay Bilyar Albano Alcala Alejano Almario Almonte Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Mercedes Alvarez Pantaleón Amante Amatong Andaya Angara Castillo Antonino Antonio Aquino Magsaysay Aragonés Arbison Arcillas Arenas Atienza Aumentado Bagau Bagatsing Bagilat Banal Barbers Barsaga Batawil Batokabe Bautista Bandigan Velaro Del Monte Feliciano Del Monte José Christopher Del Monte Ricardo Benitez Vernos Bertis Biazón Biliones Viron Bolilia Bondok Bordado Bravo Anthony Bravo Maria Vida Rosas Bulut McTamm Cagas Calalang Calderón Calixtorobiano Caminero Campos Canama Kari Casila Castelo Castro Franz Castro Pred Katamco Cayetano Celeste Serápica Ceriles Chávez Chipeco Co Coanco Coliantes Cortés Cortuna Cosalan Crisólogo Kuah Cuaresma Cueva Dalipe Datol Daza De Jesús De Venecia De Vera De Fensoor Del Mar Del Rosario Del Oso Montalia Dimaporo Abdullah Dimaporo Muhammad Duabit Durano Di Elago Enverga Erise Erigel Ermita Buhain Escudero Espina Espino Estrelia Josebio Ebardoni Pariñas Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Feriol Florendo Flores Fortún Fortuno Fuentebelia Garbín García Gwendolin García José Enrique García Albano Garin Oscar Garin Sharon Gasataya Gachalian Heron Go Anna Cristina Go Mark Gomez Gonzaga González Alexandria González Aurelio González Fernando Goriseta Gulyas Fernández Herrera Di Hopper Halos Jos Javier Co Kong Hun Labad Labad Laxson Lagman Lanete Laogan Lasatin Liachon Lee Limkaisong Lobregat López Benhar López Carlo López Manuel Loyola Makapagal Arroyo Maceda Madrona Malapitan Manalo Mangawang Mangodadato Soharto Mangodadato Zahid Marco Letan Marcos Mariño Marquez Martínez Matugas Millana Mendín Mendoza Mercado Mirasol Montoro Naba Nieto Noel Nograles Jerico Nograles Carlo Nolasco Núñez Malañaun Oaminal Ocampo Olivares Ong Edwin Ong Henry Ortega Pablo Ortega Vininola Paciao Paduano Palma Pancho Panganiban Panotes Papandayan Pichai Fimintel Pineda Plaza Primicia Segabas Kimbo Radaza Ramiresato Ramos Relámpagos Rebilia Rowapuno Robes Rocamora Rodríguez Isidro Rodríguez Maximo Roman Romero Romualdes Romualdo Roque Sackdalan Sagarbaria Sahali Salceda Salimbangan Salo Salón Sanbar San Dobal San Copan Santos Recto Sarmiento César Sarmiento Edgar Meri Sabelliano Semah Chiao Silberrio Xinson Xonsing Estrelita Xonsing Horacio Suárez Si Alvarado Tambuntin Tan Angelina Tan Milagrosa Tan Sherni Tejada Tebes Tianco Ting Tinio Tolentino Reñas Tugna Tupas Ti Umali Unavia Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Uy Barreta Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velarde Velasco Velasco Jatera Veloso Vergara Villapuerte Villanueva Villarrasa Suárez Villarica Villarin Violago Yap Arthur Yap Melesio Yap Victor Yu Zamora Maria Carmen Zamora Ronaldo Sarate Subiri
Majority Leader
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the journal of the previous session. So move, Mr. Speaker. Ay, sorry. I withdraw.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 210 members responded to the call. With 210 present, the Chair declares a call room. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the journal of the last session. Journal number 61 dated February 12, 2018. So move, Mr. Speaker.
If there are any objections, the Chair resigns and the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and direct the Secretary General to read the titles of the bills and resolutions in first reading as well as communications committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
If there are any objections, the Chair resigns and the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read resolutions and bills.
Reference of Business Resolution, House Solution 1655, expressing the sense of the House strongly denouncing the practices and proposals for compressed work week that reverse workers hard-won, hard-won century's struggle for eight-hour workday, Representative Sarate.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1656, directing the Committee on Human Rights to investigate on the human rights violation committed against the indigenous peoples in Liangkasurigao de Rassur, Representative Sarate.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1657, commending and congratulating the UPD Liman College of Law, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Solution 1658, directing appropriate committee of the House to investigate the reported shortages of price quantity available in the market, Representative Panganiban.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1659, directing appropriate committee to investigate the real state of our country's price supply, Representative Salon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1660, urging appropriate House committee to inquire on the non-implementation by the Board of Pigeons of the Pangasinan State University or by the chair of the decision of the Ambudsman in OMB-L-A-16-0318, Representative Espino Akop and Batawil.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1661, urging DOE to intercede in behalf of the people of Abra to prevent the implementation of the Order of the Philippine Electricity Market Corporation, Representatives Uy Barreta and Vernos.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Solution 1662, recommending to the Board of Pigeons of the Subu Technological University to establish a campus at barangay Guba, First District, Subusiti, Representative Delmar and Hofer.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Solution 1663, expressing profound condolences on the demise of Philippine theater, film, and TV actors, Pankey Manigan, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1664, directing the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability joint with the Committee on Energy to inquire on the manner by which the DOE grants licenses, permits, and guidelines, Representatives Bertis and Bravo Anthony.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1665, directing the House Committee on Information and Communications Technology to inquire on the use of blockchain technology, Representative Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1666, directing the House Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to investigate on bill, operate, transfer agreement entered two by and between the Bureau of Immigration and Data Trail Corporation, Representative Barbers.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1667, directing the House Committee on Ways and Means and to review the provisions of Customs Modernization and Tariff Act on disposition of property in customs custody, Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1668, conducting an investigation in the exercise of congressional oversight functions on the lack of supply of NFA rights, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1669, directing the House Committee on Higher and Technical Education to evaluate and investigate the implementation of 8 billion pre-tuition policy, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1670, urging the House Committee on Basic Education and Culture to promptly convene a joint congressional oversight committee on Republic Act 10533, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Solution 1671, directing the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries and Finance Bureau to investigate the acquisition of Pascaireat Rocketing 6.42 trillion foreign debt, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1672, expressing profound condolences to the family of victims and directing the Committee on Human Rights and Welfare of Children to strongly condemn and investigate the death of three children in Liangkasurigao de Rassur, Representative Elago, Rosas, Casila, and Tinio.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communication letter dated October 10 of Delphine and Lorenzana, Secretary Department of National Defense.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Committee report, report number 601 on House Bill Number 7162.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 602 on House Bill Number 7166.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, at this juncture, I move that we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Lawrence Lemuel H. Fortun of the First District of Agusan del Norte. The following guests from Butuan City, namely, Butuan City Councilor Ferdinand Nalcot, Councilor Rema Erigwagas Burdeos, and barangay captains of the First District of Agusan del Norte. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The guest of Representative Lawrence Fortun stands up to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to move to recognize the guests of the Honorable Divina Grace Yu of the First District of Zambuanga del Sur. The science teachers of the First District of Zambuanga del Sur representing the overall champion in the 15th National Science Quest held in Baguio City, namely, Mr. Lake Quihano, Mr. Ditan, and Mr. Christopher Pulisco. So move, Mr. Speaker.
May the guest of Representative Divina Yu stand to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Also, Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Cheryl De Loso Montalia of the Second District of Zambales. The following balikbayans, namely, Benilda Rose Fontilera, Leroy Fontilera, Ernia de la Cruz, Bobby de la Cruz, Endel Mendoza, Corazon Quihada, Letitia Quihada, Isabelita Macabare, and Nelson Quihada. So move, Mr. Speaker.
May the guest of Representative Cheryl De Loso Montalia stand to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Lorna Silverio of the Third District of Bulacan, namely, the guest from Bulacan Agricultural State College of San El Defonso Bulacan, namely, Mrs. Josefina Mananggit, Mrs. Cecilia Santiago, and Mrs. Rodora Iracta. So move, Mr. Speaker.
May the guest of Representative Lorna Silverio stand to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6775, and for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is not, and the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 6775 and conduct nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6775, Anna creating the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development defining its mandate, powers, and functions and providing funds therefore. Roll call of members consideration, House Bill Number 6775. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipaybiliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaro Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Villisano, Belmonte Eze Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Vinites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Viron, Bulidia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Noted.
Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau.
Mr. Speaker, ang bota ko po ay no, at ako po'y magpapaliwanag ba ngayon?
Noted.
Castillo, Casa Franz.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no.
Casa Pedenil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kawanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no, and would like to explain my vote later.
Noted.
De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Dellosario, De Loso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Boyain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Quintebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Christina, Gomart, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Arreledong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferreradi, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lesatin, Liechon, Lee, Limkaychong, Labrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Nouel, Nugralis Jerico, Nugralis Carlo, Nulasco, Nuyes Malinyon, Bo Minal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Rehto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semah, Chiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tinio.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no.
Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Hui Juliet, Hui Rolando, Hui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With 193 voting in the affirmative, 6 negative 0 abstention, House Bill Number 6775 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the members who wish to explain their votes. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Brosas is hereby recognized of three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, mga kapokoh kinatawan, ang representasyong ito ay tutol sa pagsasabatas ng House Bill 6775. Ang panukalang batas na naglalayong buhin ang Department of Housing and Urban Development, ah, Department of Human Settlement and Urban Development sa mahabang kasaysayan po ng pakikibaka ng mamayang Pilipino para sa abot kaya pang masa at may kalidad na programang pabahay sa mga maralita ang susing usapin na hindi nareresolban ng gobyerno ay ang patakaran sa palupa at pabahay na nakabalangkas sa privatisasyon at sa layuning kumita. Kung mayroon mang kailangan baguhin sa mga batas sa usapin ng pabahay, ito ay ang pagbabago nito mula sa pagiging profit-oriented to service-oriented. Na may layuning makatuwang sa mamayang nagdaraho, sa halip na sila ay lalo pang ibaon sa pagkakautang sa patong-patong na mga bayarin. Dahil napakalaki po ng binabayaran nila, milyon-milyon, pero sila ay mga maralita, no, sa mga pabahay na ginawa ng gobyerno. Maraming mga probisyon sa panukalang batas na nakababahalang magamit upang lalo pang pagkakitaan ang serbisyong pabahay sa mga maralita. Sa definition of terms, nakatali ang pagpapakahulugan sa informal settler families, so ISFs, sa lugar na kinatitirikan ng kanilang mga tahanan, sa halip na pagkilala sa kanilang panglipunan at pangekonomiyang katayuan na siyang nagtutulak sa kanilang manirahan sa mga estero, reles, at maging sa waterways. Sa ganitong definition, nagmumula ang mga arbitraryong mga desisyon, halimbawa mula sa mga local government units, so LGU, na mga banta at aktwal na pagpapalayas. Isang tiyak na halimbawa nito ang naranasan ng maralita sa Pasig Floodway, sa Tondo, sa Quezon City, at sa iba pa. Nakapangangambarin ang pagtingin ng panukalang batas na ito sa social housing. Sa inihahapag na definisyon ng social housing, nakaottoon nito sa walang pigil sa pagtatakda ng interes sa pautang sa pabahay. Malayong-malayo sa ultimong layuni ng social housing na dapat sana ay nakatuong mga programa sa ating mga maralita na kababayan. Kulang o di kaya naman ay wala halos na kinikita. Sa makatwid, walang nireresolbang usapin sa pabahay ang panukalang batas. Layuning pa nitong ibukas sa pribado ang mga batayang serbisyong panglipunan tulad ng pabahay, pati nga sa dayuhan. Bukod pa rito, pinangangbahan ng representasyong ito ang magiging malawakang tanggalan sa hanay ng mga kawanin ng gobyerno dahil sa magaganap na pagsasanib at pagreorganisa ng dating pitong ahensyang nakatutok sa pabahay. Sa panukalang batas, walang probisyon magtitiyak para sa mga kawaning maapektuhan ng ganitong reorganisasyon. Sa karanasan ng ating mga maliliit na kawani sa gobyerno, ang abolition, restructuring, merging, streamlining, at integration ay nangangahulugan ng malawakang layoff sa likod ng mga pabalatbungang reforma ng redundancy overlapping in programs or functions at pagpapalakas ng private sector participation. Sa National Housing Authority pa lamang, tinatayang mahigit dalawang libong regular na mga manggagawa ang maaring mawalan na ikinabubuhay. Sa ngayon pa nga lamang na proseso ng rationalization, higit dalawang daang kawanina ang natanggalan ng plantilia possessions, o di kaya naman ay na demote. Halos 6,000 kawanin din mula sa iba pang key shelter agencies tulad ng HURB at HADC ang maaring matanggal sa trabaho. Naninindigan ng Gabriela Women's Party na hangga't nananatiling nakatuon sa layuning kumita ang balangkas ng programang pabahay sa Pilipinas hindi mareresolban ang pagtatayo ng hiwalay na departamentong usapin ng kawalan ng masisilungan ng milyong Pilipinong patuloy na pinagkakaitan ng batayang serbisyo sa ilalim ng ganitong patakaran. At sa bawat panukalang batas para sa tunguin ng ilang mga reforma sa mga ahensya, yes, Mr. Speaker, I'm wrapping up. Marapat na matiyak natin ang kasiguruhan sa kabuhayan ng ating mga kawani. Muli iginigiit ng representasyong ito ang pagtutol sa panukalang batas at ang pagtindig para sa pangmasang pabahay at seguridad sa trabaho ng mga maralita at kawani ng gobyerno. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Casilau is recognized.
Salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ako po'y bumuboto ng no or the negative dahil aminado namang po ang ating mga sponsor ng panukalang batas na ito ng House Bill 6657 na hindi po matutugunan ito ang balangkas ng polisiyang sa usapin ng serbisyong pabahay. Nakabalangkas pa rin ang panukalang batas na ito doon sa Urban Development Housing Act. Ang anumang struktural na pagbabago o pagsasaayos mula sa pitong shelter agencies hanggang sa isang departamento, hindi pa rin ito tinatanggal ang orientasyong pumapabor at nasa pangunahin, nasa unahan ng pagpapatupad ng programang pabahay sa ating mga maralita sa usapin ng mga primadong negosyo. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, hindi po matutugunan ito ang papalaki at papalawak na bilang ng mga informal settlers at 'yung housing backlog. Aminado din ang ating mga sponsor na ang 5.1 million na housing backlog ay hindi matutugunan sa panukalang batas na ito. Pangatlo, Mr. Speaker, magdudulot at magdudulot ng tanggalan ang reorganisasyon. Ang pagbubuo ng isang departamento mula sa pitong housing agency o shelter agencies ay magdudulot ito ng tanggalan ng mga empleyado. Sa kasalukuyan ng ating gobyerno ay isa sa pinakamalaking tagahireng ng mga kontraktwal na mga manggagawa sa iba't ibang antas o ahensya ng ating gobyerno. Habang nandyan din po at pinapatupad ang right sizing sa mga government agency at tiyak, kahit na mayroon pong dalawang taong transisyon ang panukalang batas na ito, hindi pa rin kinakailan ito na magkakaroon ng tanggalan mula sa mga job order, contract of service na mga posisyon na hanggang sa ngayon ay walang balak ang ating ahensya ng mga gobyerno para magkaroon ng regular o mafill 'yung mga vacant na mga slots. Sa panukalang batas din ito, Mr. Speaker, mas maigin tugunan itong usapin ng orientasyon. mas maigin tugunan itong usapin ng orientasyon ng Public Housing Bill. Hindi po magkakaroon ng malinaw na implementasyon ang Department of Human Settlement and Urban Development kung ang balangkas nito ay nasa pribado o negosyo. Kaya tumututol at ang boto po ng kinatawang ito ay no, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Jesus is hereby recognized of three minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Kamakainan lang dinespurs ng City Government ng Manila ang kampuhan ng mga maralita sa Mindjola. Ay sore at mabaho. Ito ang mga tinanggalan ng tirahan tulad ng nabanggit kanina mula sa Manggahan Floodway at napilitang magkampo sa Mindjola. Umasang haharapin sila ni Pangulong Duterte. Dahil hanggang ngayon ay wala pa ring paglilipatan sa kanila. Malayo ang ibinibigay na relocation site bukod pa sa hindi nila kaya ang bayarin. Paulit-ulit ang ganitong kwento at mauulit kung hindi uugatin ang suliranin sa pabahay. Kailangan nating marérecognize na sa karamihan ng mga tinatawag nating informal settler sa mga urban areas, galing sila sa mga pamilya na mga magsasaka sa kanayunan. Lumuwa sa siyudad para maghanap ng mas magandang buhay dahil ano na nga ba ang kalagayan ng kanayunan? Kahirapan, pangangamcam ng lupa, militarasyon, pandarambong, at kawalan ng oportunidad sa trabaho sa agrikultura. Dumating sa lungsod, nakahanap ng trabaho, at nagtirik ng bahay sa kung saan man espasyo pwede. Kanugnog ang barong-barong at iba pang maraming kaparehong istorya. Karamihan sa mga ito ay dekada ng naninirahan sa kinatatayuan ng bahay nila. Sampu, dalawampu, imampung taon sa nadat na nilang tiwangwang na lupa. Hinawan, pinagyaman, pinaunlad ng usbong na komunidad sa pagdaan ng panahon. Dadating ang isang pribadong entidad o kaya ay mismong gobyerno, papaalisin sila dahil wala silang pinanghahawakang papel na sa kanila ang lupa. Kasunod, demolasyon, at dislokasyon. At ano ba ang kahulugan nito? Pagsadla sa iba 'yung kahirapan paulit-ulit ng kwento. Sa ganitong kalagayan, solusyon ba ang House Bill Six Seven Seven Five? Ang, sa totoo lang, ang pagsasabatas ay nangangahulugan ng bill na ito ay mangangahulugan lamang ng muli na namang pagtalikod ng gobyerno sa responsibilidad nito na magbibigay ng pang masa at abot kaya ang pabahay sa mga tao. Corporasyon pa rin ang tunguin ang ahensyang mamamahala sa pabahay. Ibig sabihin ang mga tinatawag na beneficiaries ang muli na namang babalikat sa mga bayarin. Negosyo muli ang diin at hindi serbisyo. Kaya pa rin ang dati. Ang pagre-reorganize ng ahensya ay halos inulit lang ang nilalayo nitong palitan. Bumoon ang mga bagong andana ng bureaucracy ang hindi naman kinakailangan. Kabilang ng libulibong rank and file employees na mawawalan ng trabaho, mga empleyadong ilan taon na nagsisilbi sa ahensya, ngayon wala ng katiyakan sa trabaho. Hindi ang panukalang batas na ito ang sagot sa problema sa pabahay. At gusto ko rin banggitin, case in point, baka pwede pang aralin ang ginawa ng lokal na pamahalaan ng Valensuela sa kanilang disipina village. Ang pagkakaroon ng abot kaya, pang masa, at may kalidad na pabahay ay hindi maihahatid sa nangangailangan sa pamamagitan ng pagbibigay ng kapangyarihan sa mga korporasyon. Ang usapin sa pabahay ay kaakibat ng malaking usapin tungkol sa kahirapan. Kung walang trabaho ang papatirahin sa mga bahay na ito, wala rin silang kapasidad na magbayad. At muli na naman silang mawawalan ng masisilungan. Kailangan munang kilalanin ang ganitong katotohanan bago masabing tunay na maglilingkod sa inaasahang stakeholders ang anumang panukalang batas patungkol sa housing. Muli, no ang boto ng representasyong ito. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that the Secretariat be directed to immediately transmit to the Senate the recently approved House Bill Six Seven Seven Five.
Any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that the Secretariat be directed to immediately transmit to the Senate the recently approved House Bill Six Seven Seven Five. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved for the second time. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, at this juncture, I, I move that we acknowledge the guests of the honorable Baby Alin Vargas Alfonso of the, of Kagayan, namely the members of the Sangguniang Bayan of Santa Praccedes, Kagayan, the Honorable Estherlina Aguinaldo, the Honorable Carlo Cachapero, the Honorable Hill Benavista, the Honorable Gudafredo Pasqua, the Honorable Mark Robinson de la Cruz, the Honorable Hilario Cudal Junior, the Honorable Christopher Aguirre, and the Honorable Edgar Labuni. So move, Mister Speaker.
May the guests of Honorable Vargas please stand and be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Seven Zero Zero Seven. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the House Bill Seven Zero Zero Seven for nominal voting.
House Bill Number Seven Zero Zero Seven, Anak converting to Dabau Oriental State College of Science and Technology in the city of Mati and all its satellite campuses located in the province of Dabau Oriental into a state university to be known as the Dabau Oriental State University and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number Six Zero Zero Seven, ah, Seven Zero Zero Seven, sorry. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Adbingkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusekristopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixterubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilao, Castelo, Casafranz, Casafedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, De Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimoporodula, Dimoporokalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Belia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Use, Garcia Albano, Geri Richard, Gerisha Ron, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alasos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasitin, Liechon, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Leola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodatatus Huarto, Magodatatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nuyasmalinyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega, Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Lasa, Pimisia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabilliano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelita, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tamputing, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mylesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Semor Markamen, Semor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred three voting in the affirmative, zero negative zero abstention, House Bill Seven Zero Zero Seven is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number Six Nine One Four. And for this, for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the bill Six Nine One Four and conduct a nominal voting.
House Bill Number Six Nine One Four, Anax standing for another twenty-five years. The franchise granted to Penyaprancha Broadcasting Corporation under Republic Act Number Eight One Six Six, expanding its coverage to the entire Philippines and approving the transfer of its corporate shares. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number Six Nine One Four. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Adbingkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusekristopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixterubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilao, Castelo, Casafranz, Casafedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, De Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimoporodula, Dimoporokalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Belia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Use, Garcia Albano, Geri Richard, Gerisha Ron, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alasos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasitin, Liechon, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Leola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodatatus Huarto, Magodatatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nuyasmalinyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Pimisia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Hari, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabilliano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelita, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tamputing, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mylesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Semor Markamen, Semor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred five voting in the affirmative, zero negative zero abstention, House Bill Six Nine One Four is approved in, for third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number Four One One Five. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Four One One Five and conduct a nominal voting.
House Bill Number Four One One Five, Anax establishing the forestland boundary of the province of Sicion. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number Four One One Five. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Adbingkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusekristopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixterubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilao, Castelo, Casafranz, Casafedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, De Rosario, De Los Montalia. De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gareen Richard, Gareen Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Don, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alosos, Javier, Ko Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkay Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saktalan, Segarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelita, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred five voting in the affirmative, zero, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill four one one five is approved in, for third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill number seven zero five four, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill seven zero five four and conduct a nominal voting.
House Bill seven zero five four, an act institutionalizing the Electric Cooperatives Emergency and Resiliency Fund, providing appropriations therefore. Roll call of members, for consideration of House Bill seven zero five four. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Al Mario, Al Monte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Augmentado, Bagao, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Marí, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Gareen Óscar, Gareen Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Do, Goreseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alosos, Javier, Ko Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkay Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini Nola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saktalan, Segarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelitas, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barit, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villanueva, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Maria Carmen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred five affirmative votes, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill seven zero five four is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, at this point, I'd like to greet the guests of the Honorable Florida Robes from the city of San Jose del Monte Bulacan. They are here for Lakbay Aral in Congress.
May the guests of Congresswoman Robes stand to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill number two five five three, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the House Bill two five five three and proceed with nominal voting.
House Bill number two five five three, an act establishing the Chodoro and Pipito Memorial Hospital in the city of Valencia, fourth district of the province of Bugisnon, and providing funds therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill number two five five three. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Al Mario, Al Monte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Augmentado, Bagao, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando. Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gareen Richard, Gareen Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Don, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alosos, Javier, Ko Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkay Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saktalan, Segarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelitas, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred six affirmative votes, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill two five five three is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill number seven zero three seven, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read House Bill seven three oh seven and proceed with nominal voting.
House Bill number seven zero three seven, an act converting the Denai Municipal Hospital and Municipality of Datu Ostin Sinsoat, Province of Ingindanau, into a fifty-bed capacity district hospital to be known, to be now known as the Datu Ostin Sinsoat District Hospital, upgrading its facilities and professional health care, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel, and providing funds therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill number seven zero three seven. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Al Mario, Al Monte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Augmentado, Bagao, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Ko Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gareen Richard, Gareen Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Don, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Alosos, Javier, Ko Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lee, Limkay Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saktalan, Segarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suansig Estelitas, Suansig Rasyo, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred seven voting in the affirmative, zero abstention, zero negative vote, House Bill seven zero three seven is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Secretary had been directed to immediately transmit to the Senate the recently approved bills on third reading. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill, uh, on second reading, House Bill number five nine six, ah, no, seven one one, seven one one five, under Committee Report five nine six. And direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill without prejudice to the assertion into the records and text thereof. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill seven one one five.
House Bill seven one one five, an act penalizing deconversion or causing deconversion of irrigated and irrigable lands, amending for the purpose of Republic Act Number six six five seven as amended, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Agrarian Reform Law of nineteen eighty-eight.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the chairperson of the Committee on Agrarian Reforms, uh, the Honorable Representative Relampagos be recognized for the sponsorship of the measure.
Representative Relampagos is here by recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of the Committee on Agrarian Reform, we would like to manifest before this august body our desire for the adoption of the explanatory note of House Bill number seven one one five, principally authored by the Honorable Speaker and the Honorable, uh, John Ping Amante, as our sponsorship speech for the consideration of House Bill number seven one one five.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that there are no interpolators, I move that we... Uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolations and debate. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize, uh, the Honorable Representative Edsel Agman for his interpolation.
Representative Edsel Agman is here by recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to manifest that I am in favor of this bill. At the time that we have this, uh, rice shortage, this enactment of this bill is indispensable because, uh, it would enhance rice production when we are able to save irrigated and it would enhance rice production when we are able to save irrigated and irrigable lands from, uh, conversion to other purposes. But I just would like to ask some clarifications, distinguished chairman. One, Section four on Effectivity reads, "This act shall take effect fifteen days following its publication in the official gazette or in any newspaper of general circulation." This means, distinguished chairman, that the effectivity of this act, once enacted, will be prospective. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Lagman, that is correct.
Another question, and this is my second question. In other words, all pending applications for conversion, prior to the approval of this act, will not be covered. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, Honorable Lagman, actually, if we go by Republic Act six six five seven, there is already a provision in the law, under Section sixty-five, that prohibits conversion of irrigated and irrigable land. Unfortunately, in spite of this, there is still rampant and unchecked conversions, and, uh, the conversion of irrigated and irrigable lands actually is, the existence thereof is actually acknowledged by no less than by the Department of Agrarian Reform itself. And it would seem that there are certain elements within the government bureaucracy that may have directly have a hand in this, uh, present reality. So precisely because of this, in order to address this, uh, there is a need for us to add, under the existing law, the act of converting or causing the conversion of irrigated and irrigable lands among the prohibited acts, as prescribed under Republic Act number six six five seven, uh, precisely under Section seventy-three thereof. So by doing so, it would also specify the amendment thereof, in terms of who would be those responsible for which acts would constitute the conversion or causing the conversion of irrigable or irrigated lands. And in the same legislation that is being proposed for consideration, we are also at the same time, uh, making a clear definition as part of the amendment to be introduced, a clear definition of what are irrigated lands, what are irrigable lands, to include an increase in the penalty to be imposed for those persons who would be found liable in violation of this proposed amendment of the law. Because, sad to say, under the existing law, the, the penalty is not that great. So there is a need to impose a higher penalty, just to serve us, to give a strong message that this is, this act will never be tolerated.
Well, so in other words, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this is a reiteration, a restatement of Section seventy-three of Republic Act number six six five seven, but it enumerates specifically what are the prohibited acts, and would increase the penalty impossible for violation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under existing law, under Section seventy-three, this is not included in the, in the, in the listing or enumeration of prohibited acts. So we are proposing, under this House bill, for the addition of, uh, under Paragraph J, that this will be included, the actual physical or legal conversion or causing the physical or legal conversion of irrigated and irrigable lands. And it also provides there an enumeration of persons who would be liable for violation of this act.
Uh, is there any study, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, on what would be the effect of this, uh, uh, bill whilst enacted into law? To the competitive claims on land, like for example, for housing, for commercial or industrial use?
Well, the thing there, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Lagman, uh, as I was saying earlier, while there is already an express provision of law that prohibits the conversion of irrigable and irrigated lands under Section sixty-five of Republic Act number six six five seven, it is very unfortunate that still there is, uh, and the existence of, uh, conversion of irrigable and irrigated lands. So precisely because of this, uh, reality, we are instituting the amendment of this law in order to address it.
Okay. Well, the moratorium is for fifteen years. Is that correct?
Uh, you're talking of the bill filed by one of the authors, the Honorable, uh, what's this? Amante? Uh, House Bill number seven one one five is already, uh, a substitute bill of the two bills that were passed, uh, one by the Honorable Speaker of the House, uh, that seeks to provide for a prohibition of the acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for land use conversions of agricultural lands, irrigated lands, and irrigable lands to non-agricultural, to non-agricultural purposes, and the one authored by the Honorable John Ping Amante, that seeks to provide for fifteen year moratorium, the processing and approval of application for conversion of all irrigated and irrigable lands covered by irrigation projects. Now, just to expound further on this, uh, the reason why the committee came up with the substitute bill, uh, to focus on, uh, including, uh, as one of the prohibited acts under Section seventy-three, uh, the act penalizing the conversion or causing the conversion of irrigated and irrigable lands, because under existing law, uh, the committee found, finds it, uh, wise that there would be no more any need of passing, uh, the, the bills as originally proposed by the two authors, because there is already an existing law that, uh, addresses, uh, the prohibition of conversion of irrigated and irrigable lands.
Okay. Uh, under this act, under this bill, whilst enacted into law, there will be a permanent ban on the conversion of irrigable and irrigated lands. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be the net effect, uh, Mr. Chair.
That's why I had a prior question on what is the impact of this, uh, prohibition on the other competitive claimants to land, like housing, commercial, and industrial use. But, uh, if there is no such prior study, then most probably, uh, there would be a need for a post-enactment study on how this permanent ban would affect the claims for housing, commercial, and, uh, industrial usage of land. But in any event, I would like to reiterate my previous statement that I am in favor of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for that, Honorable Lagman. And be reassured that, uh, the committee will work with the Department of Agrarian Reform, for them to conduct the, this study, as you so suggested. And perhaps, if the Honorable Lagman will be amendable, uh, considering that you have already expressed your manifestation to support, probably you can be a co-author of this measure? Okay, so this representation would like to manifest, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, that the Honorable Lagman will be, uh, co-author of this measure, uh, to include all those still present in the plenary hall, if they are so amendable.
Noted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other interpolators, I move to close the period of interpolation. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The mo- is, the Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I, there being no amendments, I move to close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill number seven one one five. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
As many as in favor of House Bill seven one one five, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number seven one one five is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number six five two on second reading, under Committee Report five nine seven, and request the Secretariat, the Secretary General to read the title of the bill. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill six five two, and thereby conduct nominal voting. A second, sorry. I stand corrected. Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
House Bill number six five two, an act creating additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in Usami City, converting the Municipal Circuit Trial Court comprising the municipalities of Clarín and Toleda into municipal trial court of Clarín, and creating a new Municipal Circuit Trial Court comprising the municipalities of Sinahaban and Toleda, all in the second legislative district of the Province of Misamis Occidental, amending for the purpose, Batas Pamansabiang one two nine, otherwise known as the Jurisari Recurrence Act of nineteen eighty, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, Honorable Representative Omali, to begin the sponsorship of the measure. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Omali is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I move that the explanatory note in, uh, House Bill six five to be, uh, adopted as, uh, our sponsorship remark.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
I'm sorry, uh, I withdraw my, uh, previous, uh, motion. I move that we adopt the explanatory notes of the Chairperson as his sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
There being no interpolators, I move to close the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to, to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the amendments as contained in the Committee Report, uh, num- five, number five nine seven. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
There being no other amendments, individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote, we vote on second reading, House Bill numbers six five two. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Those who are in favor of House Bill six five two, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number six five two, as amended, is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number seven one two zero under Committee Report five nine eight on second reading, and ask the Secretary General to read the title of the bill. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read House Bill seven one two zero.
House Bill seven one two zero, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Mr. Philip Litch.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Omali, and adopt the explanatory note as his sponsorship speech. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Representative Omali is hereby recognized.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt, uh, the, uh, spor- the, uh, explanatory note as, uh, the sponsorship remarks of this presentation.
Is there an objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend consideration of House Bill number seven one two zero. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any, any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill... Uh, withdraw that motion, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill number seven one one five and seven one three four, as contained in the lists, to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number six nine one five and Senate Bill number one one zero three, on establishing a branch of the Politechnic University of the Philippines in the Municipality of Sablayan, Province of Occidental Mindore, to be known as Politechnic University of the Philippines, Sablayan Branch. The following are the representatives: Representative An Hofer, Representative Josephine Ramirez, Ramirez Sato, Representative Manuel Jose Dalipe, and Representative Jolietta Cortuna. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolution to the appropriate committees. House Resolution one six one three, uh, to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology. House Resolution one, one six, one six, to the Committee of Public Order and Safety. House Resolution one, one-six, one-six to the Committee of Public Order and Safety. House Resolution one-six-one-seven to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. House Resolution one-six-two-three to the Committee on Foreign Affairs. House Resolution one-six-two-four to the Committee on Ecology. House Resolution one-six-two-six to the Committee on Health. House Resolution one-six-two-nine to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution one-six-three-three to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. House Resolution one-six-three-seven to the Committee on Games and Amusements. House Resolution one-six-three-eight to the Committee on Health. House Resolution one-six-three-nine to the Committee on Population and Family Relations. House Resolution one-six-four-four to the Committee on Natural Resources. House Resolution one-six-four-seven to the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms. House Resolution one-six-four-eight to the Committee on Agriculture and Food. House Resolution one-six-seven-four to the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. House Resolution one-six-six-four to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Energy. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, Valentine's Day, February fourteen, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there an objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Session resumed. Four o'clock. Happy Valentine's Day, February fourteen. Thank you, Mr. De Vera.